Good evening, everyone. Good evening. Good evening. Welcome to Shorewood Village Hall. I'd like to convene the village board and the CDA, the joint CDA meeting for this evening. We are joined by trustees Ursink, trustees McGovern, trustee Lynn, trustee Stokebrand, trustee Kudo, and myself, President Mckague. Trustee Arndurfer is excused. And then from the CDA, we are joined by Joel Lasage, Mitch Opring, also trustee Stokebrand, trustee Ursink. And we are awaiting, we are expecting Wes Warren and Jessica Carpenter. And John Kraus is excused. Do we have to do any other official business in terms of a roll call or anything like that? All right. So I want to thank everyone for being here this evening. And well, thank you for your time, talent, and patience in advance as we conduct business this evening. This is truly a historic meeting. We have never, the village of Shorewood, to my knowledge, has never issued an RFP for development, redevelopment of sites. We have never intentionally welcomed proposals for affordable housing, to increase the number of affordable housing units in any way, shape, or form. We have never reviewed them as a convened body. And so I'm very excited to be at this point. We've waited a long time and we've worked toward it gradually. So I'm hoping that everyone tonight has been able to review the proposals in front of them. And we will be very process oriented, as this is, as I said, a first. So our jobs this evening. This is a review process. We will go through the proposals one by one. The developers will each get 15 minutes to present. After each presentation, we will take questions and answers from the body. We have a rubric here that was provided to us and it basically lists, it's a tool for tonight. Nothing that comes out of this meeting is resting on this rubric being completed. It is a tool because it, on the left-hand side, it includes all the criteria of the RFP. So when, after a presentation, I'd like questions to come with regards to the criteria. So for example, if a criteria of a certain proposal was not clear to you, that would be a time to ask specifically about that. So that at the conclusion of those presentation times, all of us have a sense, as full a sense as we can, about what that developer is proposing, how it would impact the village, how it's presented, and what information is there and not there. After that, we will go in, we'll kind of close that business item, and we'll go into sort of a ranking discussion. Again, it's not a pass/fail situation. Basically, at the end of this meeting, if there is a consensus of interest in proposals, then what they would do is, whether or not we want changes, or we like it as is, or anything like that, they would then go through a detailed review by our village manager against the policy 40 for tax incremental financing, and a zoning code review by the director of planning. And then at that point, there would be discussion, and it would only be after that, that potentially something would come to the CDA for approval, and then to the village board for approval. So the reason I'm laying that all out is so that everybody level sets. We are not voting on any development proposals this evening. So regardless of what happens, if any of us get a phone call that we're building a skyscraper in any parking lot or whatever, we have not taken any official action this evening. Okay? So that's not to say that we won't have discussion, and we might not, and that we won't express interest or disinterest. For the trustees in the room, this is a very unusual situation to be in because our engagement around these presentations could be interpreted as either support or lack of support. That is not the case. We are in a fact-finding, information-gathering, learning, and review process at this time. So regardless of anything that you, any of us express, and it goes for the CDA as well, regardless of anything that we express within the confines of this meeting this evening, it does not hold us to a vote yes or a vote no at a different point in time. And there was another point that I was going to make. Oh, nor should we be ranking based on whether you would ever vote for this. That's why this is separate. We're going to ask information about criteria so that we really understand the proposals, and we really have the, we ask for the information that's missing for us. We can, I invite discussion around what would you support, what would you like to see changed, et cetera. You can say, "I would never support this," but we, I wouldn't recommend that we rank based on, we should rank based on what was included in the proposal and how it meets these criteria, not necessarily whether we would vote for it down the road. Okay, we want to break this out because I think that that's the only way to be transparent to the developers who have taken the time to respond to our RFP. So I know that that's a lot of framing, but I wanted you to know where I was coming from as a chair this evening. So with that, we will have a brief overview from Bart that also gets us kind of into the technical business of the evening, and then we'll go into presentations.
Thank you, President Mckague.
Oh, excuse me. Does Mr. Lasage need to call the CDA to order? Okay.
Sure.
Okay.
Yep, looks good. So hopefully, brief is the description of what this actually provides. So just for a reference, we all know the village, but just for those paying attention elsewhere, this is the village zoning map. Site number one is the parking lot north on Oakland. Site number two is the parking lot just to our east here at Village Hall. And site number three, which we received no proposals on, is the parking lot at Oakland and Menlo. So just for your reference where they are in relation to themselves and to the commercial corridors. Next slide. Yep, so we did receive one proposal for the parking lot on North Oakland, as we refer to it as. It is a .35 acre site, 120 feet of frontage. It is already currently zoned GX1, which does allow for residential uses. It is zone GX1, which allows 4.5 stories of that residential use. It would displace daytime parking and 49 off-street overnight parking permits. On-street daytime and overnight parking permits are available in the vicinity. And so there's no business directly associated or residential use, directly associated with those permits. Those are all public parking. So once again, very, very brief overview. This one is already zoned for residential uses in the future. Next slide.
About these sites? About Bart's? Yeah, let him go through it and then, yeah, that would be great.
This is the last slide here. So this is just an overview of the parking lot to our east here at Village Hall. It is .83 acres, so a little larger. It is currently zoned P1, civic and institutional. So any development on that would be required to rezone that parcel to likely either GX1 or GX2. GX2 is what the funeral home is zoned just to the north of it, so that would be compatible. Potentially, it would require a public hearing and a plan commission recommendation, which approximately would take two to three months to confirm the status of what the zone could or would be. Parking for Village Hall and Village Center is currently provided within this parking lot. There are 79 striped spaces. We have discussed the need to accommodate some level of parking for both Village Hall and the Village Center, including the library use within there. In addition, any development on here could potentially displace up to 56 off-street parking permits that are currently there. Once again, those parking permits would likely need to be accommodated on-street through the availability of overnight permits. So that is all I really had in terms of a brief overview. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay. And how many parking spaces were on the Oakland, the North Oakland?
I believe it was 49 or so.
Okay.
Yeah, 49.
Thank you. Trustee Kudo?
Within the vicinity of these two sites, how many on-street parking spaces are available?
I do not know that information. In terms of, like, how many cars could park on those blocks?
Right, so if we're taking 49 spaces off of the Oakland Avenue site, are there 49 spaces that are available for overnight parking either on Oakland or on Kramer?
It depends how big your geography is of that particular area. There's not 49 immediately in front of that site. Obviously, there's probably, what, two or three? But with respect to the conversation, it was discussed both internally at the CDA staff level that there are spaces within blocks of that that could accommodate those permits.
Okay.
We don't sell permits on a block-by-block basis, so you get a permit, you can park anywhere within the village on that, so.
And the same question, we don't know
Correct.
how many there would be on the other side.
Correct. You might, you might need to be parking two or three blocks further away. That might actually help you, depending on where you live. I don't know. But yeah, there is capacity on-street for additional parking within the village overnight.
Okay.
Trustee Stokebrand.
So the first, the North Oakland lot has 49 spaces and they're all currently sold?
Correct. It's my understanding, yes.
Is there a waitlist? Do we do waitlist?
I don't have the answer to that. I don't administer the parking.
And the Village Hall lot has 79 spaces? 56 off-street. Do we not rent the whole lot? Are we renting the whole lot for overnight parking?
We do not. I don't have an answer to why we don't, but we don't. We rent 56 of those spaces and there are 79 total.
So we don't know if they're over demand, you know what I'm saying? Is there capacity? Is it rented as fully as it could be just because we don't rent them for whatever reason? We don't know. Or is it just that we could rent more, but we do not?
I don't have an answer for you on that.
Okay, that's, that's.
Yeah.
Would, would those 79 spaces at Village Center include staff parking spaces as well as fire department parking spaces?
No fire department, but it does include Village Hall staff. Library staff parks on Shorewood Boulevard, Village Hall staff parks in the parking lot, and fire department staff is supposed to park on their own lot. They have spaces to the north of their building.
And so how many village staff? I think the high school went through this when they did the remodel. How many village staff currently use a parking space?
I can tell you, I don't. They're not specifically reserved for Village Hall staff. The only, the only ones that I'm familiar with are I know that the two that are reserved for my building inspecting vehicles are reserved, but maybe village manager Ewald knows because she probably uses them, but I'm not familiar with them being reserved for staff.
I guess as we go forward through this process, it would be helpful to know what the village staff needs are for vehicular parking in that parking lot? Because it should be part of the discussion.
I would say the same thing for library staff.
And the library.
I do believe library staff parks on Shorewood Boulevard. I don't
So they all fit there. We know.
I believe I did talk to Director Johnson about that, and that was my memory of her answer.
Okay, and my other question was, it looked like, I always thought that it was, you could pass through from Frederick over to Murray. You wouldn't because you'd be going really close to the police, the fire station. But is there no need for them to be able, it looks like you're just limiting them to a Y turn, a Y turn backing out of the EMT, remember where the EMT vehicle is versus the fire truck? They don't need to be able to come all the way because it looks like the developments all come right up to the
Correct.
I can respond to that. All of the access for the fire station can occur from the front. We were amenable to leaving a curb cut in the rear. However, the building was designed so vehicles go in and out on their own property. If they would have needed access of village property, we would have required them to provide an easement and compensation.
So they're prepared for putting off that east? That east, there'd be enough room for them to do what they need to do?
Correct.
Other questions on the sites themselves? All right. Thank you, Director. So with that, we'll move into the developer presentations. And the way that they are listed across the top on our, it's Envision, followed by Spurling, following, followed by Spell Development Group. All right, so Envision, who would like to? Oh, and I'll tell you, we use the microphones for not recording purposes, but for here, is it, it's for the recording, right? Yeah, for the recording purposes. So please speak right into the microphone so that you can hear yourself. Otherwise, it won't be loud enough.
Testing. Can you hear me?
Yeah, alrighty. Alright. That's usually the first problem people have. And you can state your name, and we don't have to have them state their address, right? Because they don't
Awesome. Obi Uwabuzer, native of the city of Milwaukee, and spent some time in Shorewood as a student of University of Wisconsin-Milwaukee. Awesome. Just kind of adjust this just so I can see the slides moving. Alrighty, so this is the concept that we put together with myself as the lead developer in the developments. Quiet, quiet. Well, I guess while we're waiting, I can talk about the concept of the name here. I know that as I've been to a few of the village meetings since May, you guys have been talking about bringing more diversity into the village. And medley is a synonym for diversity. So I think that concept with kind of you guys starting this new initiative around affordable housing, and then this new process and initiative that you're embarking on, fit well with this kind of whole concept as a whole. A little bit about myself, like I said, I'm a native of the city of Milwaukee. I'm currently finishing my doctorate in public health at the Medical College of Wisconsin. I sit at the nexus of public health and real estate development. That is actually where my dissertation is focused on, on investment patterns, gentrification, and displacement across the United States and in the city of Milwaukee. With that being said, I'm also an acre grad. And Shorewood is near and dear to my heart as I spent a lot of time in this community when I did my undergraduate education years back with my bachelor's degree. Another thing to highlight is I sit in seats just like yourselves as a public official on the state level and on the city level. I'm a part of the governor's appointed public health council for the state of Wisconsin, and I am a member of the Neighborhood Improvement Development Corporation with the city of Milwaukee. So just a little bit to touch on here. As you guys can see, I have my development partner, Kalen Haywood, who brings a vast experience in low-income housing tax credit projects. Actually, one of the first individuals from underserved community to do a tax credit deal in the state of Wisconsin. And then we have JLA Architects, who has a vast experience in these projects as well. And I'll continue to show a little bit more of the concept projects that they have done, of a few that kind of, I think, resemble the concept of what this site can offer, with the pros and cons of what this site has to show on today. So Medley Loss. This project, we're looking at, the rents are going to be 30 to 60% of CMI. With that being said, we're also looking at rents will range from $925 to $1,150. We're looking at about 50 units because, as you guys can see, this is a tight site as a lot of the sites that you guys offered, traditionally developers tried to look at sites that are acre and larger so that they can fit enough units on their amenities, et cetera, especially when applying for tax credit projects and want to be competitive for maybe potentially a 9%. With that being said, being able to bring back to you guys as tax-based revenue, we're looking at roughly about $75,000 a year. And through this project, we're going to be pushing for a partnership with village stakeholders in Shorewood. However, we've also talked to the Milwaukee County Housing Division about this project, and they're willing to partner. And what that partnership comes with is also case management, case management for entry-level workers. So your local technician, your local librarian, right? Your local early childhood education worker, or just a person in education period, being able to have wraparound services for them. So if, you know, somebody falls on hard times or they need resources, the county comes in as being a partner on the initiative for that. Just kind of wanted to point out the essence and the, what, you know, the vibrancy that Shorewood brings to the table. You guys already have a lot of amenities in your community. And with a project like this, where it sits in the nexus, in the crux of the village, it's easy accessibility to a lot of amenities, whether it's the grocery store down the street, whether it's the local Walgreens, whatever the case may be. And then you have a lot of educational institutions around the area of Shorewood High School, a couple blocks down from where we're actually standing today. You don't have, the hospital system isn't as close by, but it's still in a good proximity to the village with Columbia St. Mary's on the lake. So as you see how you guys are positioned and how this project positions within the community, there's a lot of individuals who probably could use a project like this and as well as the benefit of where it sits today. So as I mentioned, the project is really focused on how we can bring entry-level professionals to the area, young professionals, but as well as not excluding the more seasoned and elderly population and those who may want to stay in place because we know aging out of place is a thing. And a lot of people want to stay close to their community and stay close to their families. One of the cons of the site, like I mentioned, the site is tight, but we looked at it as how can we bring a development that really complements the area, right? The site and the concept that we developed. And as you guys can see, the concept of the building, it's right up against the sidewalk. It's a four-story building, and then we're going to do a three-wood framed above a one-floor recast. So that's the four-story building. And I know that zoning will need to be changed to accommodate that. Another thing that I want to mention, parking has been mentioned throughout. I've been hearing that in the village meetings. That has been probably the number-one concern from residents and those of you who are on the village board. And I will say that we will be including the parking back. We'll have at least 120 parking spaces. This is a 50-unit project, and I know that then you guys would like to bring some back. So we're going to bring the parking back of roughly 50 to 79 added. Actually, about, about all of your parking spots, we'll bring that back for you guys, so we can guarantee that. Also, that was something that I instructed by the design team. And then if you look at the first floor, it's ad-grade parking and underground for those spaces. And then on the proximity of the project, we have three-bedroom townhomes that are walk-up style, as that is a requirement of WIDA, and two levels along Frederick Street for that as it'll go up. As you can see on the second floor concept, there's an outdoor roof amenity over the parking, and then there is a common amenity space allocated as well. That is about as much as the usable space we were able to allow on that site with needing to accommodate all the parking spots for the village and the library, as well as the parking for those who will actually be tenants of the property once developed. Furthermore, so there'll also be one- and two-bedroom units, still trying to play with that concept. As you guys know, this project will need to go to WIDA for a tax credit application. We were playing with the numbers against last year's 2023 to 2024 numbers. And the QAP came out late. Just wanted to be cognizant, as you guys are learning here a little bit. And the scoring rubric actually has not come out at all. So we're playing with the concept of old numbers, knowing that some of this will need to be adjusted to meet the requirements of WIDA. And then these are examples of projects that JLA has worked with as an architectural firm. This is an example of one that's in the local market by Three Leaf Development. That was the client. It's on Capital Drive. From a size standpoint, it's very comparable to the one that could fit on this site with a few amenities and a few units. Trying to get you guys the idea of kind of what a U-shaped project would look like and a concept that would very much so could be similar to what we would develop here in the village. And then this is another example of a project that they developed with the Salvation Army of Dane County as that's one of where their office hubs is, and they're headquartered there. And this was a set aside for small families with special needs. So just another concept that's similar in size. They have some other aspects to this project that are added on, but from the unit standpoint, very similar to what could fit on this site due to the size. And then just a quick development timeline. I already kind of alluded to WIDA being behind on their QAP and scoring rubric. So they kind of actually switched the QAP. This is not traditionally how WIDA does their submissions. They have the deadline out in December. But right now, they're just saying that the deadline for December is actually just concept submissions, which traditionally, historically, has not been a thing. So the concept submission will be submitted in December. And then, of course, final application is now being moved to March, when final application used to be December. And then the announcement of awards will still be in May as usual. And then, as you can see following, and this is also in the packet of the request for proposal submission, you have the rest of the timeline for the construction phase-out, completion of construction, and then leasing up and closing up for leasing. So you're looking at about a two-and-a-half to three-year timeline for a project like this, which is traditional for low-income housing tax credit projects. Awesome. Thank you.
Oh, that's, I was gonna say, you have about five minutes left. Well done. All right. So at this time, thank you very much. At this time, I'd like to open it up to questions from the trustees and the CDA members on criteria aspects of the proposal.
How many square feet was the building approximately?
So I want to say approximately, because we haven't really gotten to that point yet. Give me one second.
Good afternoon. I'm head chair, trustee, CDA. Each unit will be approximately 850 to 1,000 square feet. We got about 20% for common space flow and circulation. So the bill is going to be around 60,000, with 50 units, around 60,000 square feet.
Right, thank you.
I got a question. It's said in one of the slides, it's approximately $15 million project. Do you know how much of that is the expense of the 120 parking spaces?
So roughly at least a million dollars. So to add back the parking, we were roughly looking at that we would have to add an extra million dollars onto the project.
Okay, so if there was less parking, it'd be a more
It'd be cheaper, correct, absolutely.
Just to add to that question, it's a great question. I hear she was telling me that she came to the village meetings how important parking was. And if you, if you, just for this project or any other project, rule it down, right now, about 30,000, 40,000 per stall. That's going to be per stall, the rest of the ground or above ground? Yeah. So 30,000, if it's above ground, we might be able to get away with 30,000. But if it's below grade, it's going to be above 40,000, is what we're seeing on other projects. But we still have to build a foundation, still footings, and still, what we see there, we can't, we wouldn't just go build on top of what's there. So because they're going below grade for their structure, that's the cost. I wish it was different. It's a cost that we apply to deals, and we never see the money back. But we've tried to be creative and think about how we can get around that, and there's no way. In cities like Chicago, you don't have that issue. People don't mind catching the bus or Uber. But in Milwaukee, we need our parking spaces.
Trustee, you're thinking?
How many of those parking spaces would be underground, as opposed to on the first floor?
So, the goal is to have the first-floor parking for the actual tenants. So, at least fifty of those would need to be one-on-one on the floor.
So, first-floor tenants, underground parking would be for the public, go to the library, to go to village hall.
Yes.
Thank you.
We're looking at eighty, approximately eighty units underground, seventy-nine.
Roughly, yeah. We'll make sure to try to accommodate as much as we can to get those seventy-nine back. Right now, we're at anticipated a hundred and twenty stalls in total. And we would only need fifty for our project, forty-nine to fifty.
Yep.
About seventy. So, right now, you're losing about nine, but we could modify the plan and try to make that happen to get the nine back as well.
Just to follow up, you know, we have a lot of sort of senior, big senior population here in Shorewood, and especially in this neighborhood. And, you know, that utilized the library and services here, the Senior Resource Center, Village Hall. If we're parking underground, or if the public is parking underground, what kind of amenities are going to be there for, to make sure that our senior residents can get upstairs? Is there going to be an elevator? You know, what are those amenities to get the folks that are parking in the basement to the first floor?
You know, absolutely. Hopefully, moving forward with this process, we'll have to make a more comprehensive plan with this outside of just the floor plans. If we need to modify what floor different individuals need to be on, or populations, I should say, then we can amend that. So, if we feel like it'll make the project more expensive by putting residents underground, we can move them to the floor. But we're still going to have that issue of needing to figure out how people can get up based off of abilities and varying abilities. So, may need to have an elevator, whatever the case may be, and evaluate what that added cost may be.
Thank you.
One more point of clarification on that as well. When Obie was giving direction to the design team, they came up with several iterations. And the one they landed on, you always hear that parking drives development. In this case, parking really drove the design of this. And so, that elevator, the elevators, the shaft, the elevators would go to lower-level parking.
So, what are some of those other design decisions that you had to make based on the parking requirements? If there were, if the parking requirements weren't as extreme as they're in this case, would there be other things that you would put into the building?
Yeah, absolutely. Because parking drove the concept that is developed, and we were able to retract some spaces, we'll be able to have more space for, like, amenities. We'll probably be able to add more units onto the project for sure, which will allow for a larger concept as far as residents having more space. Other uses for amenities, right? Whether that's healthy living, wellness components, et cetera. But all of those require more space, and we gave all that extra allotted space to parking, because since coming to about three village meetings, that's all I heard. You know, I've talked to the village staff as well, and, you know, they've mentioned different things around senior, et cetera. But in these meetings, I heard parking, parking, parking. And today, it was the same thing, parking. At least two, three people were referring to parking.
Thank you. Mr. Upfik?
I was gonna, parking?
If you have another, you can have-
My question was, I'm just trying to understand the concept site plan here for the first floor. It looks to me like it's parking. So, is the below-grade parking not represented? So, if I'm coming out of village hall, looking east, am I going a row of parking, a row of parked cars on the, and then there's more parking below that?
Yes, because it's at grade. So, you will see parking.
First floor is at grade.
Correct. And then you'll see the townhomes. So, the way that concept is set up, it's like, almost like a podium sort of development. So, you will see some parking, but you're not going to see all the parking.
Okay. And then I had a question about, so you, you were looking for looked low-income housing tax credit from the state?
Correct.
And you want TIF money from the village?
Correct.
And so, how does that break down? Like, what would you hope to get from WIDA? What would you hope to get from us? How does that?
So, as she mentioned earlier, WIDA scoring application exhibit is not out yet, but going from historical developments, on a fifteen-million-dollar deal, we hope to generate, once allocation of credits is allotted, and those credits are syndicated, we hope to bring in approximately nine million in equity from the tax credits. The project and the cash flow from the project, the revenue from the project will drive or allow for approximately three, three-and-a-half million in, let's say, prime mortgage of the first note or a note mortgage. And then the balance is where she would be asking for the TIF.
So, you'd have to find a lender to give you the three, three-point-five?
Yes. So, what happened is, whether TIF was involved or not, at the end of the day, on an affordable housing deal, you're going to have, the WIDA is going to be the allocation entity that gives the credit. That credit, we can't, nobody in this room probably can use the credit, so we sell it to somebody that can use it, and that will generate the equity. Then you will have to go out and get a construction lender to cover that equity, because we don't get the equity to the end of the day. So, we need a construction lender, we need a perm lender for that A-note. And even if TIF is involved or not involved, there will be, the construction lender will cover that whole bill until the project is done. That perm piece doesn't, that perm piece doesn't come out until twenty-twenty-seven, I think she said. Once the lease-up is achieved, then a perm loan is in place. But we wouldn't see the perm lender until we actually prove into them that we can lease the property up, and what we call ninety and ninety, ninety percent occupancy for ninety consecutive days, is the term, kind of. But that's a far out. But the construction lender will be the primary lender for all sources in the deal on the front end.
And so, what's your, what's your cost per unit compared to, how does it compare with the market?
Tight sites. So, when we have tight sites, in low unit count, the units cost a little more, of course, because of lack of efficiency. So, we're around two-forty, two-fifty a unit. And when you look at how the market rate, in our minds, when you look at a market rate development, the subcontractors, the quality of development are the same that we use for market rate development. So, there's not, there's not a different playing, and the cost is the cost. So, if we're building a market rate unit down the street, same sub, same contractor, same materials.
Where's the same, is the material, same materials, the same contractors, cost is the same as unsubsidized?
For the most part. Minus, minus some of the finishes. You might have, you might have granted, exactly. Correct.
Do you have an estimate for what the TIF ask would be of the village?
Well, if the deal is fifteen million, and we can actually achieve the eight from the eight, or the nine million from WIDA, from the actual equity of the credit, and we could pull in three-point-five in perm, make sure that we, that our rents drive that number, it'd be the balance between the nine and three-point-five is twelve-five, so about two-five from TIF. That, and what I asked her to do when she put together her proposal is, we understand TIF is a resource that, if we don't have to use it, we shouldn't use it. But at the same time, we understand with the affordable component here. It, not, my mind's jumping around, because even with the county being a partner, one of the conversations that we had with the county was, well, Connie, would you mind bringing vouchers to the deal? And so, some of those lower-
Bring what to the deal?
Project-based vouchers, project-based voucher.
Housing vouchers?
Yep. So, what happens is, those rents are like nine and fifty. Those rents would actually wind up landing somewhere around eleven-hundred, which would help bring that TIF need down, because we would be able to produce a larger perm note. So, at some point, it's going to be, I think what she's asking for is, once it goes down the process, if this project is the one selected, to then be able to dig down a little deeper and make sure we understand where WIDA is at. They're kind of a little behind schedule this year. I think they're kind of understaffed. Some of these answers, we would know earlier. So, I'm not trying to put this on WIDA at all, but some of the things we would know a little earlier. Even the bedroom count, the three, or the unit, the bedroom count for, like, three bedroom units. We don't know, there will be a market rate component to this as well. So, out of the fifty units, there's probably going to be around eight market rate units in the deal. We just don't know where yet. And that's something that we want to have because of the diversity that allows for the project, but also there is a WIDA scoring requirement.
And is the funding from WIDA, is that a competitive process, or do you just get it if you qualify?
You want a job at WIDA, I would love for you to go work for WIDA. No, it's very competitive. So, WIDA annually gets in, WIDA allocates about a hundred million a year. Each project may eat up, say, around ten to fifteen million in the deal. But they, so they might award twelve projects, they get sixty applications. Very competitive. But there's a, there is a scoring category with the, on the application. And funds from municipalities like TIF and others will help that scoring component as well.
Mr. Upfik, did you-
Of the, you've mentioned that you don't have, like, an exact number for the three-bedroom count. Do you have, like, a rough estimate of, like, what percentage of the fifty is typically three-bedroom?
Sixteen percent.
Sixteen?
Yep. And that's, that's us, how I'm able to give that number, that's maxing out that category based on last year's application.
Trustee Stopran, did you have more questions?
I just wanted to confirm that the open green space would be on the second floor. So, I mean, I'm just looking. That would be pretty much directly to the east of us, right? The open common area would be quite elevated.
Correct. Correct. The green space would be, what we would say, the roof of the garage, so the first-floor garage.
So, that seems like a disconnect. Just as someone who, like, wouldn't you want the green space right when you walked out, village hall, wouldn't you want it? Am I missing something?
Parking. We need parking.
Yeah. So, I can tell you this-
For the building too, isn't it?
Again?
Green spaces for the building.
Green spaces for the building, not for, yeah, exactly. The green space is the mini for the residents of the building, for the mentally. I can tell you now, we're working on other projects. We have one right now where another municipality demanded that we have the green space on the second roof, I mean, on the second floor. We didn't even want to do it, because of costs and some other things, but they demanded, because they wanted the tenants to have some outdoor space. The site was very tight, very similar to their site. The site was very tight, but they wanted the tenants to have somewhere they can go outside, and not just be in their unit.
I can, the Light Horse on Oakland has- has that type of design. All right. Trustee Ursing, did you have another question? Trustee Lynn? Trustee Kudo? My question would be, would you be open to flipping the parking so that public parking was at grade level and residential was underneath?
Absolutely.
All right. I think that that would be more palatable if we even got that far.
Yeah, I would agree with that as well.
And you say that this would require a zoning change, because we don't, we don't do zoning changes. Don't we? Isn't that true?
What part of it would?
What's that?
What aspect part would require a zoning change?
Oh, am I? Okay.
Well, as I mentioned, the lot is currently zoned for public or civic use. An application to rezone it to a commercial use, which would allow for-
That, that we do. That we do. Yeah. Sorry, it's not funny, but it is funny. Trustee Stopran?
So, what about the land? Are you assuming we're giving you the land? Are we selling you the land? Is it a hundred-year lease? What's the deal with the land?
So, we would need site control. That's another requirement of the WIDA application to move forward. So, we don't have site control, there's no deal. Secondly, based off of our numbers, we're playing with what it looks like that we could pay for the deal, maybe like fifty thousand dollars is a good amount to say that we could pay for the site.
Give us fifty thousand dollars for a parking lot? And then we would put it on the tax rolls, excuse me, we'd put it back, we'd put it on the tax rolls when it was done?
Correct.
Are you giving us a number, an estimated valuation?
Yes, seventy-five thousand in revenue a year.
Increased.
Increase. Correct.
To also to add to that, to that question, one of the things that we kind of bounced around is, do we ask for the land for a dollar and not ask for TIF? If that makes sense, because you kind of balance it out. Do we say, can we get the dollar, the land for a dollar, and now we don't need TIF? The problem is, TIF was needed anyhow because of the gap. So, we're not sure if it's fifty thousand. We understand that, understand that the more that we pay for the site, the less we will request in TIF. The goal, the goal is to not, the deal is so much simpler if we don't have TIF involved. So, that's where we're trying to get to, but fifty thousand is not, it doesn't make it, you know, it doesn't make it. So, we, we run numbers at a dollar, we run it at five, fifty thousand, we run it at five-hundred thousand. But the five-hundred thousand is, to me, I think, more acceptable to all, but it also would then require you, we don't, it makes the project more expensive, so now we have a larger ask.
Thank you.
Hope that makes sense.
We're just loading the money to pay ourselves back.
Right. Right. Right.
So, final questions for this?
Last question. Would there be any possibility of using PACE financing for any of the green-built portion of it?
Yes. We, we've used, well, we haven't used, we've explored PACE. Some of the things that, so, one, WIDA will have a requirement for us to use, to develop to a green-built standard. We typically try to use those standards, those items, to kind of overlap with our PACE kind of criteria. But we also don't want to add extra cost to the deal. And sometimes, we, the reason we haven't pulled the trigger on PACE on some of our other projects is because of the cost to the deal overall. So, it seems like there's a, initially, sometimes it seems like it, our general contractors don't like it at all, but we're always trying to explore other models. I can tell you this, outside of, so, what happens a lot of times is, we receive an allocation from WIDA, right? And we've made this TIF request to the municipality. But then we also explore Federal Home Loan Bank. Their cycle's a little off, but we've explored Federal Home Loan Bank. So, say we get three-hundred thousand from Federal Home Loan Bank, then that reduces the TIF. So, we don't, if we ask for one-point-five, now we're asking for one-point-two. So, we're continuously trying to go out and pound the pavement and find other sources to fill a gap.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Spurling?
So, I'm Brian Spurl. The company name is Spurl Commercial, by the way.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay. I saw that on the agenda too, but that's okay. I figured I could use this opportunity.
And I was like, I've been calling you the wrong thing for twenty years. Our kids were in the same little league.
Yeah. Yeah. Nice to see you again. Trustees, thanks for having us. President McCake, thank you very much. So, I wanted to, first off, introduce myself and our team, and then run through our presentation. This team has been with me for the last three years upon founding this company. We've worked on a lot of different proposals and have brought one in particular to light recently in Whitefish Bay. And so, I just wanted to take this time, because I didn't really do it in our, in our, our initial submittal as to exactly who we are. So, I thought I'd just take a moment to say who we are. And so, I guess I'll start with our planner, Joy Shields. Tell us about yourself, Joy, if you'd like.
Well, my name's Joy Piet Shields. I know quite a few of you as well, because we, our children came to Shorewood. I live on the east side of Milwaukee. I've been an architect, practicing for over forty years. During my time with, with Brian and David, I think the focus on low-income housing is really important, and it's something that I'm very enthused about, trying to bring good design and quality projects to all markets.
My name is Dave Corey, and I've been with Brian's business from the start. My career was in medicine. I was a psychiatrist. I worked at the VA for my whole career, so became very acquainted with the connection between housing and overall health and mental health. So, it's a meaningful thing, and I'm excited to be able to pursue it from the housing side instead of the doctor's side with Spurl Commercial. My role in the company, I'm new to real estate, so I'm kind of a sidekick, but I'm involved in strategic planning and figuring out the rules of WIDA and applications and other funding sources, and scouting for sites, and working with Joe, with Joy and Brian in site planning and so forth. So, I'm kind of, kind of a member of the team at large, I guess.
As, as, as the last team up here said, the, the process of WIDA actually is very complex, and so having this team is, has been, has been just a pleasure to work with, are really smart people.
Working, working in federal government, as a frontline worker and an administrator, I've come to appreciate and enjoy figuring out rules and reading policy. appreciate and enjoy figuring out rules and reading policy. And so one of my jobs is, is powing through the, the Wida stuff and Act fourteen stuff and Act eighteen stuff and Federal Home Loan Bank stuff. And I'm trying to decode the system.
So, um, okay, so thank you very much. So, what I'd like to do, um, is discuss our vision for the site located at forty-four and, uh, forty-eight and fifty North Oakland Avenue. Uh, I'd like to, um, uh, give you a little overview of the site that we're working on and Bart kind of already did that. Some of the design features and benefits that, that we see at this particular site. Where we've done this before, our project timing and why we think our project makes sense. So, with that, if you could just turn to the next page on, uh, so just briefly on me, um, I've been in development business for thirty years. And everywhere from Milwaukee to Chicago to Minneapolis, I've worked on, on offices, high rises, um, in the last twelve years, I spent most of my time on medical office buildings. And the low income housing tax credit business is, I've, I see a lot like a, a medical build to suit in many ways. Because you have a fixed rent, you basically have to build something to the rent. And, um, and so that's what we're doing. And you're, you're building, you're building something to the rent and the capitalization around which that rent supports. And so, that's, that's in part what, what brought me to this, but also the fact that I think we're serving a, uh, uh, a need throughout Wisconsin and definitely, yeah, Milwaukee County in putting affordable housing projects, particularly in suburban communities where they don't really exist. Next page, please. So, this is the site, uh, it's a small site and, uh, it's a hundred twenty by a hundred twenty-five, it's fifteen thousand square feet. But you can just kind of see, um, if you look at where the site is, uh, and all the housing around this commercial corridor, well, what's missing? Um, looks like a housing development is missing. So, that's probably why it's also zoned um, to support, um, housing. And, um, and so what I did was, that comes straight out of your zoning code in terms of what the intended use is for that particular site. And if we take the setbacks into consideration, we really only have twelve thousand six hundred and fifty square feet to work with. Next page, please. So, what we're doing on that twelve thousand six hundred and fifty square feet is putting up eighteen units of multifamily apartment units and twenty parking stalls. That's the most it fits. And, um, but that's okay, because, uh, what fits on that site would bring eighteen really great units and a financial structure that makes a lot of sense. Next page. This is, uh, so, so a lot of developers don't provide renderings at this stage of the game, because uh, uh, you know, beauty's in the eye of the beholder. And, but I did this, enjoy put this beautiful plan together, because we wanted you to see, what does this look like? What could it look like? Ensure the building facade could look any number of ways and you could use any number of bricks and you could use, you know, different windows and different colors and so on and so forth. But fundamentally, the, the shell of the building is very similar to other, um, projects that we've worked on that I have an example, look very different, but fundamentally it's the same building. So, I don't know if Joy wants to just take a moment just to talk about her vision on this from a design standpoint?
Well, I, I think, you know, we look to, um, the principles of new urbanism and this is a very, very urban site. Really definitely want to respect the street edge. And if you go up and down Oakland Avenue, the old nineteen thirties apartment buildings, it's a very uh, uniform and concise street edge. And, and we, we really want to respect them. Um, I think vision that we're showing here respects it in a contemporary way. Take our scale and proportionality and, um, blend it in such that it reflects the similar proportions and reality street, but in a more contemporary fashion. Um, we've added details of Juliet balconies, hoops of with covered, uh, entryways, all of which along that block. There's not a lot of buildings that have bumps and, you know, it's a fairly flat and concise, um, street front. So, that, that's kind of where we choose from. Um, streetscape would just kind of continue what's already happening there, planting. Um, our building shields the wonderful, concise urban situation and add from the parking. Parking lot. Um, and we utilize the alleys.
Thank you very much. So, next slide, this, this is a project that we are currently, uh, developing, cleared the site on, on the corner of, uh, Hampton and Santa Monica. This is seventeen units, it's actually designed as eighteen, but we couldn't, we could only, uh, put seventeen, because we had to put twenty-seven parking stalls on this site, which it does not need. But, that's what you get. You get seventeen units rather than eighteen. But, as a, as a point of reference, you know, look, this is the facade that we chose for this building and that the residents of Whitefish Bay ultimately chose. But it's very similar to what we're proposing here. Uh, from a project timing standpoint, um, so, um, probably hard to see that now that I see it up on the screen, but, um, you know, a lot of, a lot of planning goes, heavy planning goes into the first, you know, six to nine months of these projects. And, uh, and then the rest, of course, is, is, uh, is finalizing the capital stack and ultimately building it and delivering it. But what, the reason that that we went with this site in particular is because we don't think it has any major site work issues. I don't know yet until we do due diligence. It does not require any zoning changes. Uh, we are asking for the Tiff extension money, but no, no additional Tiff, so there's no, no need to go through the additional, um, process to get Tiff. Uh, there's no pile driving or shoring, uh, on this property. There's likely, uh, it's simple, but it's quality construction. And there's a proven model that we've already deployed to do a project just like this. I have loan commitment from Wida, I have three million dollars from Milwaukee County. I won X eighteen and fourteen from the state of Wisconsin that's administered through Wida. And so we were able to find the right capital stack for a four percent non-competitive low income housing tax credit project. Next slide, please. So, this is, this is basically the budget. Um, this does not include land costs, but the total project cost under this is roughly five point two million dollars. We, um, our, our income, because it's a four percent low income housing tax credit project, um, our rents are sixty percent of the county median income. And the income qualifications to live here, roughly between forty-two nine and sixty-one two fifty. We assumed a debt, uh, based on an NOI of a hundred and six thousand. And that's, uh, with a one point one five debt service coverage ratio. Uh, we would use the four percent non, non-competitive tax credits. We priced them at eighty, eighty-two cents. My understanding from what we're working on right now is that's roughly the market for eighty. If you're familiar with how they price these, the, like in Whitefish Bay, that we sell the tax credits, they're, they're worth one point eight million dollars in tax credits. You sell them for eighty-two cents on the dollar and you get one point five million in equity. Uh, we wanted to point out that the Tiff extension for Shorewood really matters in this project. It couldn't be done without it. And it's similar to what we did in Whitefish Bay where Milwaukee County put in three million eighty-eight thousand dollars. The difference in that project is we had to pay a lot of money for the land. And so, if we took the land piece of this out of it, it basically comes out to about the same. Uh, the real estate taxes, this is a state, uh, uh, state statutory issue. It's the percentage of the project, we estimate it to be about thirty thousand five hundred dollars a year. It's about twelve and a half percent of gross, uh, rents. The, and then the annual operating budget for this, uh, we think we build a better mousetrap, more efficient, but generally speaking, fifty percent of the gross rents usually go to expenses. Next slide, please. So, why does this make sense? Well, uh, it's, it's a non-competitive tax credit project. And, and what, what our colleagues in the room explained is that there's a process behind these tax credits. And there's a, in the competitive world of the nine percent and the four percent competitors, um, you have to compete with projects from all over the state and not only just general set aside projects, but, but, um, senior housing and, um, and, and other, other types of development. So, it's, it's highly competitive. In fact, we did some research and only, in the last five years, only fifty-four percent of the applicants won that nine percent. Thirty-five percent were put on hold, ten percent dropped out. And so, in our view, we think we're putting forth a development that it's almost a surety that we can get to four percent, because it's non-competitive money. It doesn't count towards the federal allocation of funds that come into the state every year specifically for federal low income housing tax credits. There's unlimited amount of funds, you just have to, you have to, you have to qualify, you have to score. And, and then ultimately, under the new rules, uh, um, you know, Wida has to have enough, uh, bond, bond capacity after their non-competitive, uh, process. But, but we think this project makes sense because it's feasible.
What add? The reason why the non-competitive for? I would add, the reason why the non-competitive for is feasible, uh, is because the scope of our project is small. Uh, there's only seven, there's only eighteen units. If we tried to get zoning exceptions and go to four stories or five stories and go to forty units or fifty units, then we're talking, uh, uh, indoor parking, we're talking maybe basement parking. That, that budget doubles in size and now non-competitive for is not enough. So, then we're right in there with competing for the nine with everybody else. So, the, the key to the non-competitive for is, um, keeping it small. And that's, that's how we cracked the code and that's our niche. And I know there's other options out there, but that's what we find works.
So, that's exactly fifteen minutes.
Yep. Oh, okay.
Yeah. Do you have any questions? Yes.
Uh, what would be the average cost for, per unit?
Uh, it's, it's roughly two hundred and eighty thousand to three hundred thousand a unit. It really depends on the, on the land cost element, which, um, I don't have in this, in this scenario, but.
Rental cost?
Well, I, I guess I'm speaking rental costs for residents or somebody that's coming in there to, to rent a unit. Are they rentals?
Yeah, so, so Wida has a specific schedule and this year's schedule, the one bedrooms are eleven forty-nine and the two bedrooms are thirteen sixty-eight, I want to say.
Something like that. It gets complicated, because then there's utility allowances and.
That, those are gross rents. So, that's the most amount someone will pay for their entire rental, including, uh, all their utilities. That's gas, electric, utilities, the whole.
So, it goes off of how a person's income relates to the county median income. So, Wida provides a list for each county of what the county median income is for, uh, a one-person family, a two-person family, et cetera. And then, um, uh, these units to, to qualify for the four percent non-competitive, they have to be, um, reserved for people who are making sixty percent of the county median income. So, you take that number that the, that Wida provides, which is something like sixty-seven thousand dollars for the county median income. You multiply by that, that by sixty percent, uh, and that's the income of the person who could live here. And then, then they say that a person can afford thirty percent of their income in rent. So, you take that, you take that county median income, multiply it by sixty percent and then multiply that by thirty percent. And now you're down to an annual rent, you divide that by twelve and now you've got your rent. So, that's all on Wida's chart. It's not
Got it.
our choice. Wida tells it what.
Appreciate that.
And, and it's around eleven hundred dollars a month.
Thank you.
Just for clarification, are these rental units or are these like condo, like purchased?
No, they're rentals.
Okay.
Yeah.
What are the, um, bedroom counts on the units?
We have, uh, twelve two bedrooms and six one bedrooms. And a one-to-one parking ratio.
Yes.
So, do you use vouchers then? No.
It's not necessary. We can, like in the, we used, uh, some VASH vouchers in Whitefish Bay as an example. Um, so you can, there's nothing against it.
And so, in Whitefish Bay, the village itself did not contribute anything. It was federal money funneled through the county. Is that correct?
No, well, I guess you could say funneled. Yes, there, there was, there was.
Trying to use the word funneled?
Yeah. Yeah. No, 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 there was, there was, there was, the county, the county was allocated ARPA funds that they set aside specifically for suburban affordable housing. And we were the winner of an RFP for that money. So, yes, it's true, uh, uh, Whitefish Bay did not contribute, um, any Tiff or any money for that, uh, the county bridged that gap.
And you, I know we've talked about this before at a meeting, why that can't happen in Shorewood is?
Well, because the county's out of ARPA money. Um, and most places are out of ARPA money, but it won't, it won't be, I mean, we'll, we'll check. I mean, I, like, like the last team up here, um, you know, if, if we want to, we want to make it is, is attractive for everyone. And so, if we can attract additional, I think as Mr. Haywood said, uh, gap dollars, because that's what it takes. They only, the, the projects will only support roughly thirty percent of debt. And then the Lytec or the equity investments, maybe another thirty percent. So, you got to find another forty percent of money. And depending on what the land cost is, in Whitefish Bay, it was, you know, one point five million dollars basically by the time we knocked the buildings down. Um, that ate up a lot of the money. So, that's what it took to put a suburban affordable housing project into a, into that community.
And so, you were just fast, fast to the cash COVID table and were just.
Well, I'd hardly call it fast. Actually, uh, actually another, another project failed and we were, we, we were there to, to, um, to step into their shoes, not on our, our specific site, but for this money, because you got to get rid of the money, otherwise you got to give it back.
Last ones to the ARPA party.
Would, would a project similar to this be viable if it was just for market rate housing?
Um, it would be viable, but, um, um, that's a good question. Um, like in the case of, in the case of Shorewood, probably not. And so, I'm going to say here, probably not either.
One would have to test the market and see, to do a market rate project, there needs to be a bank that's willing to make the loan and an investor who's willing to put up maybe thirty percent of the total cost. So, one would have to design a project, figure out what you can get for rent, figure out what the net operating in, income is, and then shop it around and see if someone's interested. And it, with lending rates the way they are right now, I don't think market rate developments are working that well.
But we did get two, we got a new building last year. Market rate. So, it would.
But, but interest rates
Yeah.
past three years went up so fast that those things were probably worked on before that all happened.
Yeah, I mean, what happens, I mean, there's, there is economy, uh, economies to scale. And generally speaking, most of the market rate apartments that you see going up are fifty units. Costs the same amount of money to put a team on a piece of, on a piece of dirt, regardless of its size. And usually the site costs are a big part of it. And that, that's a, that's a sunk cost and you got to, you got to fix the site.
Uh, would you be, um, open to adding underground parking? Or what would that do to your project?
It would kill it. I mean, the, the, you know, as, as the last group said, you know, it's, the, the market for that's thirty thousand dollars a stall. And I've, I've looked at plenty of, of, um, projects. And like I said, in the case of another project, I mean, it was a million dollars, it just didn't pencil. And, and therefore I didn't even waste your time with it.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Have you ever done a project like this with first-floor commercial? Or is it always residential the whole way through?
Well, no, I have not done it with first-floor commercial. I can tell you that it's hard to make that model work under the affordable housing financing.
Wida, whether it's a competitive Lytec tax credit deal or non-competitive like ours, only eligible costs count. And if 20% of your costs are to build the commercial space, that doesn't count in the eyes of Wida. So you've got to come up with another fund, source of funding and another loan. And so our capital stack, which had just three things in it.
It's a little more complicated.
A coffee shop on the first floor. Now we've got to find like six sources of capital and it gets complicated.
Yeah, I'll just add to that because I know your fact-finding is that they put 30-year restrictions on these, Wida does. And when there's a tax credit investor involved, they own 99.99% of the project because that's the only way they can maximize their tax credits. And so they just wouldn't do it.
And I'll just interject that the pattern on the street, at least in this section in this block, is really apartments to the ground. So I think the building without retail actually fits better into the neighborhood.
One moment, please. So I know renderings are just an idea. In the past, contemporary style hasn't been well-received by the community. And so is that something that you're open to? So for example, if you look at the Atwater right over here, it went from, I would say, slightly modern-looking to looking as much like the 1920s buildings as possible.
Yeah, I can tell you a brick is 40 bucks a square foot and you work your way down. You could put cement board, you could put LP siding, you could put, you know, you can't put stone on because then you're going up to 100 bucks a foot.
Yours is brick.
Partially, so ours is a balance. In the case of Whitefish Bay, I think 25% is brick, 50% cement board, the other 25 is glass. You know, it's a trade-off because you're trying to balance costs to what you can finance. But we love beautiful buildings too.
Well, I think it's not, it's more of just what the community seems to be comfortable with. So I don't think it's a comment on beauty at all. You know, that's completely, we've been discussing it for years here in Shorewood. Get me started.
The thing that would be hard to change is the massing and the size and the proportion of the building and how it relates to the neighboring structures and how it fits within the code. The materials and the facade, there's any number of things we could do.
And all 18 of these units are affordable units, correct? Would having a mix of units affect the Wida funding or how that works?
I mean, ultimately, yes. I mean, I could tell you that most of the 9% deals that you see, you know, they're going to have probably 30 or 40% of them at the 30%. They'll have some of them at 50, they'll have some at 60, they'll have some at 80. Wida just changed the rules on market rates. They used to require market rate, which I think they're changing that rule. But it would change the financing, yes. Although I will tell you that in Whitefish Bay, we had three units at 50% because that was qualified for a program called HOMES.
Thank you. Trusty kudo? No? All right. Ms. Barbara Kylie Miller, questions only, please.
Thank you. I have two questions for the developers. Barbara Kylie Miller at 4051 North Downer. Last year, through a long process, the Plan Commission and Village Board approved a form-based commercial zoning code. And so I'm wondering whether you've had a chance to review that and maybe have a conversation with our planning director about what variances or adjustments, I think is the term we used, as we specify, you know, what materials, what the roof shape should look like, you know? And my second question is, for those stoop-based entries, what adjustments would be made so that they are ADA compatible and those with mobility issues could enter?
I'll take the ADA question. There's actually a slope on the site, so the ADA entrance is off the parking lot. That is at grade. And then as we move towards the Oakland Avenue, we come up with about 24 to 30 inches of steps up to create that stoop.
If you're in a wheelchair, you can't enter the front door?
Yes. It depends on whether you're saying the front entrance, you know, the drop-off, if somebody's coming as a visitor or being dropped off, is on the, my direction's right here, east side of the building. And that is the ADA accessible side.
So process-wise, a detailed zoning code review would be done after this?
What I can say about our project though, and like our other project is, if I'm not mistaken, this meets all those current zoning codes. For both, for Shorewood and also, of course, anything that we design meets the international building codes. And also, Wida has some of its own codes.
Yeah, the parking ratio.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right.
We do, we did an ETHAB.
Right, so that would be part of the...
Saide coverings and stuff.
Yeah, that would be part of the review.
We really look forward to a collaborative process on that and designing something that looks like something that the village wants. It would be nice to work together on figuring out what that is.
Said like a true psychiatrist. I can see you. I'm a recovering therapist, so I use a lot of the same tricks. But anyway, it's okay. I'm just joking. All right, we can wrap up discussion on this. Thank you very much. Thank you. And T-Spell Development Group.
Good afternoon. My name is Travis Spell, CEO of T-Spell Development Group. I actually have Michael Carson here as well, Raymakers Architectural Design. And we can go to the next slide, jump right into the team. Excuse my voice. As you prepare that, I've been doing residential development since 2020. In 2012, I went to a commercial where we did office buildings in Milwaukee. We also did Kenosha. And then also, we made our way into affordable, well, not affordable housing, but some units in Green Bay, which right now we're working on actual environmental to go through, which is definitely taking some time. But this agenda, today, we're going to go through some project concepts and details, the target population, services that we're actually going to offer within our, I always say community. I never let it say the project, but within our community, the management plan, the potential funding and the development timeline. You can skip right over that. So again, my name is Travis Spell. Our next partner is Dr. Jones of Amrai Counseling Services. She has a doctorate degree in social work and also a doctorate degree in psychology. Have 55 staff members, have four locations, location in Milwaukee, have a location in Kenosha and two locations in Miami, Florida. We also have Michael, I'll let Michael introduce himself.
Hi there. Thank you for the opportunity to come and meet with you all today and to present our, the project. My name is Michael Carlson. I'm serving both as a representative of our architectural department at Rainy Kerr and as well as a development consultant. Travis and I met through Wida's Supportive Housing Institute about two years. I had the opportunity. Very glad and privileged.
Our management team and also co-developer is Dennis Hansen from Luther and Social Services of Wisconsin and Iowa. So from a supportive housing approach, some things that we want to make sure is that the priority is to provide stable and permanent housing. It feels good when you can come home and you can rest at ease. Affordable housing is being a challenge across our country. And then financial literacy, we want to have a tailored program for those who are in the lower AMIs, which you will see, to have a curriculum for they can come to in a teen. How do they get to the next journey in life or if they need some daily living skill? Partnering with some financial institutions, help them with credit unions, even help with job readiness for those who are in the lower AMI. Ongoing support, we have residents that's going to help with coaching, track their process, also help with their budget. And then we have a holistic approach. If any of our tenants feel like they feel overwhelmed by life, you have supportive services that they can come to lean on versus trying to handle everything themselves. Next slide. So we have individuals, we have monthly meetings in our, we have individually meetings because we have an intake assessment. We have, once they go through the intake, Dr. Jones would normally be here, but she's at a convention, so I'm doing her slides right now. But she'll have an intake assessment or they have a mental health assessment. Anybody who have any challenges in substance abuse, anything when it comes to counseling, case management, it can be, the counseling agency can be helping. You can go to the next slide. So that services will be provided and the funding will not come on the county. It will come from Milwaukee County and other various institutions that they have for funding that can help tenants and community. Next slide. So let's go into what we're here for. So this will be the perfect rendering when it comes to what we look forward to as far as what we look to build here. Now, Michael, if you want to jump in and kind of give the reason why from the courthouse and...
Yeah, I think it's interesting how a site yields some of its own design solution. So I think a lot of the themes that you'll be seeing in terms of design from the first presentation are echoed here because of those same constraints. We've got a tight parking lot. We have a real interest, public interest, parking by staff, residents, by folks that are visiting libraries. All, we have a certain density that we're trying to attain so that you have that economy. We'll talk more about this later, but we're also proposing to fund this through that loan tax credit program. And within that, you need a certain number, within the 9%, I want to clarify, as opposed to the 4%. It really helps to have a certain density because you have a large enough project. So that helps set the scale of the building count. And then in terms of that parking, the way to attain that on that site is really level around and level at a still park. So the site itself recommend, at least that is a design solution the site recommend.
Be clear, this is what you would propose that it look like?
I would say this is more kind of a general massing study, kind of getting a sense of, okay, we know we can attain X number of site or plane overall kind of weight. How can we? So I think the point was well-made earlier that you have to take a... Arts and... Aesthetics and...
You two are doing a great job presenting, but if you just, I want everyone to be able to hear you. If you could just step a little bit closer to the microphone. Thank you so much. You could actually pull it up.
Inside your packets of the RFP, we actually have some fitted models inside there. But you'll be able to take a look at where you see the podium parking. You'll actually see the underground parking and you'll actually see the number of counting. You'll actually see the handicap parking. And you can all see that within, you guys actually got a little more information than the slideshow. We can go to the next slide, please. So our unit count is 53. 30%, 16 for 30% AMI, 13 for 50%, 16 at 60% and 8% which will be market rate. And we also are going for a 9% tax credit. So within the 30%, a lot of people always have questions, especially when it's your first time as a community having tax credits or affordable housing. You always want to know, what does 30% mean? What does 50% mean? Who's that targeting? So when you look at 30%, it might be a part-time worker, someone who makes minimum wage, who's a college student at UWM. When you think of 50%, it might be a school teacher. $51,000 for an annual for people, that could be a school teacher. When you get to 60% AMI, I think about our state representatives. Sometimes it might even be our orders. So a lot of times we have a misconception of what is affordable housing and how can it help us? And the numbers right here by the different AMIs explains who we are targeting.
I'm going to like to add to that too. Within affordable housing, I'd encourage you to think of affordable housing not so much as what's built, but how it's, in other words, you can have the same market rate product and that shell can look completely different. It can look modern, it can look traditional, not what you're building, it's how you're paying for it. And there's a reason that this tax credit program keeps coming up. It's probably the most powerful out there for creating and supporting affordable housing. And just to give you a sense of how that tax credit works, I think it's useful to make an analogy to single-family financing. When you go into buy a home, you bring 20, I'm using a traditional finance. Bring your 20% down, you finance the other 80%. You can kind of imagine that math. Now imagine you bring 50% down for that same home and you've got a 50% mortgage. And you do that math, well, that mortgage is going to be that much less and that monthly payment is going to be that much less. And that's exactly how this tax credit program works. The IRS hands the developers this big bucket of tax credits, which are really tax breaks is really what they are. They're coupons for tax. And you go out there and you find an investor that's got a lot of money and a high tax liability and they buy those credits from you, buying tax breaks, essentially is what they're buying. And you get that cash in hand and that's your down payment, that and the other sources that are later in there. That writes down that total funding, funding stack enough that even within the limited rental payments that the lower-income folks are making, that can still afford that permanent mortgage. I just want to help clarify that, just to give some color to what you're hearing here today because there's a reason the tax credit program, then the conversation here is a funding.
I have a question. The materials that we received, they had an $18 million cost. Or is this revised then? Because this is only 15.8.
Oh, the one that said official?
Correct.
This is the one that's...
So it might have been, it was the performer that I sent to you.
One of the pages says Oshkosh. And I noticed that also some of the pages say there's three-bedroom units and I didn't think there were.
Oh, no, it was a revise that was all the way that I sent Rebecca. I'm sorry, Rebecca.
No, it said the official. Are there three-bedroom units?
No, no. So for this, there will be studios. We have, let me pull up the exact...
15.
Correct, correct. Okay, so we have 33 one-bedrooms and 22 two-bedrooms. Next slide. Can we get that to them too later on?
Yeah.
Okay. Perfect, thank you. So this is our development timeline and I'll let Michael go through the development timeline.
Feel similar to what you saw with the, we're really looking for stabilized occupants. Real similar to what you saw with the, we're really looking for stabilized occupancy, meaning the building is open, about ninety percent of the folks have moved in. In twenty twenty-seven, I think really gives a sense of. So application for the nine percent credit opens up late this year and then on inter, next year, takes a few months. Find that investor. We're also including a measure of what they call the AHP or Affordable Housing Program, Federal Home Loan Bank. That submission timeline, talk about something that should happen at the state levels, all these programs are really coordinated. But Wida will allocate its credits in summer of next year. AHP submission timeline is December of next year, an announcement early twenty-two. So once that whole capital stack comes together, groundbreaking could happen, say in spring of twenty-two, six, because the funding secure.
The document I'm looking at has the Shorewood TIF at two point seven six. Is that still accurate or did that? I know we have two point one.
Here was two point seven.
Two point seven six six was the ask. But I don't know if that's, if that's the correct document or if I'm looking at, we have two point one. We would have, this would be an additional half million or a little bit more than a half million in TIF. But I don't know if this is accurate, I don't know.
So seven hundred and seventy-one thousand was what we'll be looking for, what we asked.
Okay.
It's on a revised copy.
Not, I just wanted to double check.
Right, it's on the.
From two point six to seven hundred, eight hundred K?
Right.
Okay.
And a lot, and a lot of that is our conversation back and forth with the city. Again, our communication with zoning, our communication with cost, that this is a ongoing process, but it's never just, you know, we can say today, this cost can go up.
Sure.
We all know our COVID really.
But as of today, that, you're saying you were looking for eight hundred thousand in TIF money?
Correct. Now there was, well, I'll leave it there. So. So again, I'm certified with the CSH, certified through Wida when it comes to supportive housing. Well, we're all certified, the entire team is certified. And we have an incredible team. Luther Social Services has done over seven hundred and seventy-six HUD deals, they've done over six hundred and eighty-five Lytec deals. And they, they not only just in Wisconsin, but upper Iowa as well, and into Illinois. So that part of our team is not here today. Dennis has the luxury to be on vacation for the month, I congratulate him. But they also are property management team as well. And with property management, I can't think of the numbers off the top of my head, but I believe they see, oversee over two hundred, two thousand properties. So with that, that's our team, I'm Travis Spell, T-Spell Development. Again, Michael Carson of Raymaker and Luther Social Services and Amright Counseling Services. Thank you.
Did you talk about parking spaces?
So parking.
Did I miss it?
I don't think so. I think it's in the proposal, but it's not, I haven't spoke about it. So when it comes to parking spaces, we have sixty underground and sixty podium style. Those a hundred and twenty.
And similar costs for parking to the other, like thirty or forty thousand per se?
Correct, correct. Parking killed the deal in Green Bay because it went from twenty thousand to thirty-five real fast.
Yeah.
Clarify that thirty to forty thousand, structured, closed parking, structured, as a full purpose out there, which might.
And do you have, would it be possible to put the tenant parking underground and retain very level parking for the library and village services?
For me, that would be ideal, just so they can go underground and take the elevator to their floor.
Is there an updated performer then? I'm assuming.
Yes, Rebecca has the updated.
Okay.
I apologize, but.
It happened.
Oh, it's.
It happens, right.
Don't worry.
I grabbed the one that said official.
So just, so I just want to make sure I got the numbers right. It's fifty-three or fifty-five units, fifty-three?
Fifty-three units.
With a hundred and twenty spaces.
Correct.
Obviously using the one-to-one, so the remainder of the spaces would be for parking.
Correct.
Okay.
Is there a reason that you avoided three bedroom units in the, in the proposal?
I'll let you.
Yeah, I wouldn't say a reason, I would then find it.
Correct.
Is a scoring item.
And also, it's some of that going back and forth with the city and the zoning as well. So again, this is the start, but throughout the journey, this is a marathon. When we say two to three years out, you know, right now is the starting point. And as we collaborate together, we can find out what each other needs. And then we take that and evaluate the numbers and look at the Wida constraints.
Trustee Stockburn.
So, we have set aside two point one million dollars for affordable housing. How does that play a role in this? Are you looking for the land? Do you think, I, you know, you talked about a TIF, eight hundred thousand dollar TIF. Someone else said they want to give them.
Can you use your microphone?
What, what do you, what are you looking for from the village? You might, I see, there's one line here for Shorewood TIF, there's two hundred and seventy-three thousand under contingent debt. So I guess I'm confused about what do you want the village to come up with? You mentioned eight hundred thousand TIF.
Eight hundred from the.
So, eight hundred thousand.
Only eight hundred from the two point one?
And where do we land on the cost of the land, if anywhere?
So that would be a conversation that we have throughout the process.
As far as your budgets, the way your budget's designed, what did you, what, what did you put in there for the cost of the land? And again, I'm, sorry, I don't have the updated.
Oh no, no worries. We have our performer pulled up.
It's in the Excel spreadsheet somewhere, I'm sure.
So we, we had forty-five thousand.
Okay. And what is the annual return in tax?
I believe it's sixty-two, sixty, it's either sixty-two or sixty-seven thousand. Let me check. Correct.
Sure.
Thanks.
Okay.
So sixty-two thousand.
Other project at the same cost estimates a thousand.
Yeah. Versus thirty-five, eight thousand.
I do appreciate, that's the best discussion I've ever heard about how to understand low-income housing tax credits. Thank you.
No worries. You get your pride.
Other questions?
What's the five hundred thousand dollar delayed development fee? What's that mean?
That's the developer's fee. So we can get the, so developer's fee always come through over, over time. So I'm using my developer fee as part of equity to go onto the deal, and then I'll recoup it on the back end.
Would that be an addition to the eight hundred?
No.
Eight hundred's just part of the, eight hundred's just part of the, that's what they need to do the deal, that's what they need to do the deal. So the five hundred K is somewhere in the deal.
Correct.
In the eight.
It's in the.
Right.
Per development, get out of the upper range. First paid development, project, survey, texture.
And we're still paying a quarter of a million on our.
Right, any other questions?
I'm concerned, so Lutheran Social Services, why are they with you? What, is this going to be only for disabled and elderly?
No, Lutheran Social Services is a nonprofit developer. So a lot of things go onto our tax credits, our tax scores, and they're actually a partner as well.
So they help you get the elder?
They're, they're.
Because they're a partner?
Correct, correct.
They're the developer, right?
Full developer, we're partners, so we're both partners.
And those services that you mentioned, and there were quite a lot of them, those, how long are those services available to residents?
So the way.
Traditionally, maybe, I mean.
Say that, yeah, I'm sorry, the last part you just said.
So traditionally, how, I mean, in past projects, or how has the, how have those services worked out over the length of?
Correct. You know, those services are for the entire of the building, until, well, the building lifetime's thirty years.
Yep.
But Luther Social Services has been providing these services for all their tenants since they took over all their locations.
So it's, so it's not just with the first round of tenants?
Correct.
If we're on the third iteration of renting this apartment, those services are still available to those renters?
When you say third, well, it's a profit.
Yeah.
So there's a.
He hasn't rented for very, for a long time. When you renew your lease, it doesn't.
Yes, thank you.
For the ones who went through that process, the intake, because it's a volunteer basis.
Okay.
For those who, who want those services are volunteer basis, and they have to go through an intake, especially intake process. And there's a, there's a guideline and zoning that they have to do with the management team. And so you have two sides, you have the management team and also the service providers who help through that, that journey.
Yeah, I mean, what I'm, you answered the question. What I was trying to figure out is how long those services are available to residents of the building? If those services continue, your lease expired, you moved out, someone else moves in, those services are available for that new person as well.
Correct, correct, correct.
If they need them, so it's not, you don't, right.
But each, for each building, for this location, it will be thirteen that's set aside for that type of services.
Okay.
So because of the Wida criteria, if an individual comes up, then we have to fill that with another individual who needs the service.
Oh, all right, thank you.
So it's a quota, okay.
Thank you.
So how does that cash flow work then with, with that person in that unit? Do they pay for it or?
But, okay.
Yes, they're, they're still paying a month.
But for the social services, is there a, is there a component?
There was, it probably was four slides back, it was probably four slides back, but to the left, there's a list of, list of Milwaukee County. It's like thirteen.
Right.
Items that help us, Luther Social Services find out where their funding providers that pay for their services, it's, it's actually on there.
So you would actually work with?
Correct.
Okay, because I believe that was what envisioned it also, the current county.
Correct.
With the current county finances, does that make you nervous at all?
Because I know Dr. Jones and I know how hard, hard she work to find funding and grant funding, and I know how Luther Social Services hard they work to find funding and grant funding. I don't think it'll be a problem at all. Now, the problem previously was that a lot of projects was a hundred percent supportive, and those are the ones that have problems.
And also my understanding is, I mean, if the person was eligible for Medicaid, then the services would be paid for through their Medicaid benefits. So it's, they're billed, they're billable services. It's not necessarily like grant funded, like free for everybody kind of thing.
Correct. And when I say grant, my, my grant terminology is different from the way they explain grant terminology. But CSC and things of that nature.
Right, they're public benefits that can be built for these services.
Correct.
So that's why it's not really, it's from a programmatic or a community aspect. It's a great component for a, a living community to have, for people to have access to services. It kind of decreases that risk of, you know, falling into crisis and losing housing. It's, it stabilizes. But it's not part of the financial deal of building the project and asking for assistance or anything like that. It's totally separate.
It's totally separate, correct.
Now what pays for the administration of those services? That outside, that's a pretty heavy lift for a property manager. Someone has to administer these for the resident.
Luther Social Services is a property management company.
I see.
So they would provide.
Correct, correct.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. So that concludes our presentations. I'm going to ask for the lights to be brought up in the house there, because I think everyone's probably fallen asleep. I know why we had them off, but it's time to bring them up, because the sun has set. All right, so what I would like to do, moving into a discussion of kind of ranking these for, or assigning some type of expressing. Anyway, we'll say ranking, but we, we are not required to get to a certain, and we haven't scheduled, we haven't established, like you have to get to a certain point to advance past this stage. So we're using it as a guide. I'd like to go project by project, hear from everyone in terms of their responses. And then I think after we do that for each project, I'd like to go around and just get a temperature from the room around what you, again, not that you would vote yes for it, but what you could see moving forward. If there's anything that's just a non-starter, what you would need to see is different, you know, we're just trying to look for. We don't want anyone to go through a process that they aren't going to be somewhat successful on, you know, it's not worth it. So that's what we're kind of looking for. If everybody in the room says, I hate all three of these things, then that gives the developers a really good indication of whether they should, you know, pursue an application or, or a zoning review or whatnot. If it's mixed, you know, again, we're just looking for, to give feedback to staff and, and to the developers that are here tonight, okay? So with that, I would like to look at the Envision project. And can we go around and share responses? Of how you think that they did in terms of meeting the criteria, and then value that they bring. Trustee, your sync?
You know, obviously, a lot of these are, this is a very difficult sort of conversation, you know, in our community. I think it is, it is something that we're all, we're all, we're excited about, but yet we're, you know, we're kind of, you know, there's a little apprehension about building on such sort of an iconic spot in our community. It's connected to the, the library, it's connected to Village Hall here, and I think, you know, obviously the parking, parking is a big discussion. So I, I think, you know, we're sort of, none of us are taking this project lightly, and there's going to be extra scrutiny here between our board and the residents. With that said, I thought, I thought the, you know, the Envision presentation was, was, was great. I thought, you know, we saw the parking we needed to see. The design, I think, you know, I, I think there's, there's some, you know, the design is, is fine. I like the, the mixture of townhouse and the mixture of units, and I thought the project would, you know, I, I think the project would be, you know, kind of fit to what we are looking for. You know, I think there's still a lot to be sort of thought about and discussed after this, so I'm, I'm still trying to process all of it. It's hard for me to give you my instant reaction, but I thought that it met a lot of the criteria that we are looking for. And I, and I really think that there's, you know, there's a lot of potential there.
You. Trustee McGovern?
And this, you just want to hear about the Envision one first?
I think so. Is that, Steph, we kind of talked about, do you think that that's kind of the way to keep it most clear? I think it's probably most helpful for the developers.
Yeah. Yeah, I, overall, I really liked it. You know, we really face, both in Shorewood and nationally, we have a real shortage of housing, especially affordable housing. So I really think they hit the mark in terms of trying to squeeze as many units as they can into kind of a small lot.
Um, you know, it's, the downside, if you build on parking lot, is some people are going to lose free parking. Um, but I think that, um, you know, we put in there, um, in the RFP to maximize, uh, maintaining parking stalls. And both, both sites, or both proposals for the library site, put a huge amount of parking, actually more parking than housing. If you look at, um, the number of stalls versus the number of units, and it would be my hope that when we, you know, especially you look at the cost of these projects, there's a lot of competing, uh, demands on our budget, um, competing demands for the proposals that Wida gets. Um, you know, everybody, of course, wants parking, free parking, convenient parking, but free parking is not free, somebody pays for it. And so it'd be my hope that in this process, we take a really close look at, um, how much parking we really require in these projects. Because the, the cost is really enormous, especially for something that's supposed to be focused on affordable housing. Um, this site is convenient to the bus, um, good chance that some of these folks wouldn't have two cars like a lot of households in Shorewood. Um, so there may be less demand for parking overall than, than we're just kind of assuming is needed. So that would be my hope, but, you know, overall, they, they've got, um, a lot of really good experience. They've done similar projects. Uh, it seems to be, um, like it really hit all the, the criteria that we were looking for in the RFP.
Thank you. Trustee Lynn?
Yeah, I thought the, um, proposal, um, I really appreciated it very much. I thought it was really well done, and I, I really, um, like the care and attention that was put towards meeting, um, the stated needs, uh, for the site and for the community. Um, I appreciated the townhouse, um, design, and, um, you know, feel confident, uh, that they could do a good job meeting the requirements and, and, you know, getting what's required to get the project done. Um, I, I have a lot of concerns about that site in particular and building on that site. Um, I was hoping tonight would yield more options on the other two smaller sites. Um, you know, if I'm looking just at what that site is, I, I do think this, um, project fit the needs for that site. Um, but not, it's not my preferred choice to build on that site.
Fair, thank you. Trustee Stokebrand?
I would echo that. I, I think the proposal is a good proposal. If I was in favor of developing that site, there's a lot of good things to consider here. I'm just, I don't see us developing that.
Thank you. Jerope?
Um, I think it, it met a lot of the requirements from the, from the RFP that we put out. Uh, I would like to echo Trustee McGovern's concerns about how parking has affected this process. We do have several sites that we want to get affordable housing on, and we're looking at the numbers of how much money is being requested from the village for the TIF. And we, with the parking that we're requesting, we can't do all the sites. Like, it's just that the money's not there for it. Um, so I personally would prefer, if we were looking to increase the amount of housing and get more housing out there and focus less on the parking. But I, I understand that I'm probably in the minority on that in this room. But, uh, yeah, the, um, presentation was great.
Trustee Kudoff?
Then let me represent the majority. Um, I, it, it was a good proposal, right? I mean, the design looks good, the number of units looks good. Um, I'm in a much, I'm in a similar boat, uh, as trustees Lynn and Stokebrand. I have a, you know, in order for me to be comfortable developing that lot, it's going to have to be a heck of a project. Um, and it's going to have to bring, oh, you know, a ton to the village. Um, I don't know that I've seen that yet. Um, this, this project, you know, requires, um, the full boat on what we have for TIF extension. All the money that we've set aside for TIF extension. So, you know, if we do this project, there is no other project using the TIF extension money, um, which is a concern for me. So, again, it, it met all the requirements. I don't have any problems with the designs again, but I'm not, I'm not there yet on, as a yes vote, on developing the parking lot behind us.
Mr. Lasege?
Liked the proposal, thought it was good.
Use your mic, please.
Yeah, I liked the proposal. I thought it was really professional, well done. Um, I'm ambivalent about the parking. I can see the argument going both ways. At some point, every city has to make a choice between growth and parking and density. And at the same time, this village has voted to use those TIF bonds for affordable housing. So one of the frustrations I have with this group is everyone saying no to almost everything, um, and not being open-minded, so, um. But I do see the challenges, and I'm not a super in favor of developing this lot, having said that, at the same time. Um. But it's not because I want to preserve parking. Uh, I liked the proposal. They seemed like the, they had their ducks in a row, and, um, I'd be interested in, in seeing that one progress further.
Thank you. Uh, I agree with everything that's been said here tonight, and I do think that, um, the lot behind us is politically the least favorable. Um, nobody wants to take that on. Um, I think that it does have a lot of potential, and I think we, um, the fact that we would be maintaining public parking at grade level and actually making it better, because it would be covered, and so it wouldn't be icy in the winter, and it wouldn't be rainy, and, you know, it would improve access to that parking, um, and to the facilities. Um, that said, you know, people have been, uh, really, you know, the people that we've heard from have asked, please don't consider developing that lot. Um, but that aside, I think the proposal does meet all the criteria and offers a lot of benefits. All right, uh, moving on to the Spurle, uh, project?
Yeah, um, so I thought that, uh, this one seems a lot more palatable, you know? I'm not a huge fan of the overall design. I, you know, I, I think that would probably have to change in order for it to see sort of, um, you know, consensus around here. But I do like, uh, in theory, I like, you know, I like the project. Um, you know, this is another project that would require all the TIF extension funds, um, which is a probably bigger conversation, because I think there's two, I think everybody is requiring that. So you gotta figure out where, uh, which project we, you know, we kind of favor here for those funds. But I, I thought that, you know, a lot of that makes sense, uh, especially, you know, I think with that one, we lose the parking, but I think there's ample parking on side streets. And I think that we can, we can kind of get over the parking hump there. Um, but again, you know, great presentation. I, I think that, uh, you know, two of our categories, the acre program and the participation in targeted business enterprise, I don't think those, those two were, were met in this particular, uh, presentation. But overall, I thought that, um, you know, that this would be a welcome project, and this is probably something that I could support before supporting, um, developing the parking lot back here.
I like this one as well. Um, I like the simplicity of it, you know, kind of a smaller project. I like the rendering fits very well with, uh, what's on site currently. Um, hits the, the requirements for, you know, um, building units, you know, using the site. Um, it does, it does save a lot of money by not building underground parking, so, um, I actually liked the rendering. I, I like, thought it looked nice. Um, uh, so I, I thought this is, this would be a good one as well. I'd support this too.
Thanks. Trustee Lynn?
Um, yeah, I appreciated, uh, s- seeing something for this site. Um, you know, this was the site that I thought was the most, uh, suitable for putting a, a development on. Um, and I was, I, I think they did a really good job. I think really, I would echo kind of similar cons-, um, uh, you know, appreciation for it. My only concern was that I, you know, if we're committing the full two million dollars, um, that we have to such a small number of units, I just, I would really want to ensure that it's a really high quality, um, building, you know, uh, and, and that it ma- meets all the standards that, that we sort of have as a, as a way of life in Shorewood of, of living in a nice luxurious, uh, place. Um, I just would want to make sure it's up to the, that highest level. Um, but otherwise, I, I think it's a good fit for the site and, um, would like to see it go, go further from there.
Trustee Stokebrand?
This is a plan that I could really get behind. Uh, I, I applaud you for bringing forth a more, uh, developed design, because I think it, it just helps visually see what this would look like, and I appreciate your sensitivity for the neighborhood. Uh, you're clearly are skilled at doing that and finding something that look, I'm not saying I could sign off on it exactly the way it is, but it looks like it would fit in well. And I think it's very doable for a village of thirteen thousand people with a twelve million dollar budget. Um, I understand it would use all of our money, so I would hold off on that a little bit. We have had, um, a meeting that included a talk about land trusts and possibly putting people in private homes. So this, though, is, uh, a top contender for me. I like, I'm not concerned that the numbers aren't big enough. Uh, I think you have the expertise to get the financing done. You have a track record. Um, the only negative I saw really was, um, when we first started talking about this in twenty twenty-one, we felt that it was important that it be inclusive. And I believe some of the others have a mix of market and affordable, and I think there was a feeling that we didn't want anyone to know if someone, like the light horse. If someone comes out of the light horse, we don't know if they're in a, in an affordable unit or not, and clearly that would not be the case here. But I understand that, and, um, I understand why, and I could, I could overlook that.
Yes.
Um, I really like the, the short timetable on it, like the, um, it seems like, because it's simple, it can get going pretty quick. Um, I, I am a little bit less excited about using all of the money for, for such few, um, units, especially because we did just have the conversation with the land trust, and we could do a similar program, getting about eighteen homes with that same money. And so like, I, that, that is something that I do have concerns about.
Um, I, I like this proposal. Uh, I thought it was, I thought it would, the, the building design I thought was, was pretty. I thought the layout with parking in back, keeping it on the street level, um, matches the rest of that block really well. Um, I, you know, I don't love using or losing a bunch of parking spaces, but I'm not, I'm not married to them. So, um, you know, the, there is a concern about using all two point one million, uh, that we've set aside in TIF extension. Um, but, you know, I really like the fact that this development is move-in ready in twenty twenty-six, and the other two are twenty twenty-seven. Um, and so, you know, having this started, I, I'm obviously using the criteria that the village has set forth for build quality and, and everything Trustee Lynn discussed. Um, I would be interested in, in taking a longer, harder look at this development in this space.
I agree with what I was saying. I think it was greatest chance of success. Um, I liked that parcel the best for developing. Part of my due diligence, I called some of the business owners on that block would be most impacted by the loss of that parking. Um, one of the comments was, what public parking lot? Um, the other, and the other one was adamantly, we need affordable housing more than we need parking. So, I mean, I, I don't want to speak for them. That's what they said to me about that spot. That's not every business owner, but those were those business owners. Um, and I don't think it's our job to maintain parking for, which basically subsidizes the permanent building. I love, I like the look. I think it fits in with the neighborhood. That's my approval.
Thank you, um.
Oh, I will echo, though, that I did not like that it used up all the funds. There's some way we can run that. That would be ideal.
Uh, yeah, I agree with a lot that's been said. Um, it does, uh, when I look at two proposals that get us fifty-plus units versus eighteen, that is really hard, but the, you know, the size of the site's different. Um, but in terms of all the thi- all the pluses, um, that's definitely the case. So, but that's, in terms of our mission, I mean, I'm really committed to increasing housing, and so this doesn't check that box for me. Um, but I can hear that it's, uh, a lot more palatable and, and politically feasible to get done. And at the end of the day, if nobody votes for something, nothing gets done, so I have to keep that in mind. It doesn't mean that it aligns with, you know, what I would like to see, um, and I'd like to see two out of the three of the, I'd like to see both lots. Um, I'm open to both lots being developed. So that said, um.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yes.
Um, can, could someone re- remind, or Bart perhaps, how many affordable housing units are in the first proposal? Do you know offhand?
Fifty units.
They're all affordable housing units?
Twelve? Oh, eight.
So forty-two.
Forty-two of five, okay, and then in the third proposal?
Right now, all fifty-three units were affordable in the, oh, also eight market rates. Okay, so less than fifty, so forty, something.
Cool, thank you, sorry, I just.
Um, with that, I did think, um, as I think I'm the only renter on the, um, uh, yeah, those parking permits go for buildings that don't provide parking. Um, so yes, not our duty to, um, maintain that, um, side of the business. I think so, those tenants would be faced with a choice of whether they can still live there or not, um, and if it, uh, meets their needs. So that's a big policy shift of just taking away fifty-six permits for people that are relying on them every night. Um, that said, if it disrupts that market, it does open up other opportunities for people that don't need parking or need parking right, you know, that close to their building, um, to take advantage of those units, which are affordable. And they're naturally occurring affordable housing. Um, so, but I feel obligated to represent the renters who have parking permits and, you know, would be out of luck. So I don't like that, that that is an outcome there. Um, all right, so that said, we have gone through the, um, proposals. Let's do, uh, as if it weren't.
We should do number three.
Oh, I'm sorry, I, in my mind, was just talking about, so, yeah, T spell.
Uh, another great, uh, great presentation, so thank you very much. A little very thoughtful. Um, you know, it, it met a lot of the criteria we asked for. Um, for me, it scored, uh, probably a little slightly higher, um, higher than Envision. But at the same time, I love where Envision was coming from with the seventy-five thousand dollar, uh, tax, tax roll. I thought that was great, and that's kind of what we're looking for here. Um, you know, I, I think it's the same sort of, same issue presentation, great. I love the, uh, the services that we could provide to, um, some of the, the residents that would be there. Um, and, um, you know, but I, I think it comes down to the appetite of developing the parking lot. Um, that's still going to be the biggest sort of challenge within this board. Uh, outside of that, great presentation. I thought, um, you know, um, I thought definitely something that I think would be worth, uh, consideration and further conversation.
Similar comments, um, another good proposal, in my opinion. Um, it hits the requirements for maximizing the number of units in that, in that space, um, reserves parking. Um, overall, I really liked it. I probably would have ranked it a little bit below Envision, just I felt there was less of a track record on doing similar proposals. But, you know, two, I think, really good proposals overall. Um, and then I just want to make one quick comment on the, the previous, um, proposal, the, the Spurling one. I'm just curious, you know, if, if we do, if that project does go ahead and we end up taking away parking permits from people, I'm wondering if the village can come up with some new kind of permit or some way to, you know, give those people free street parking or something like that, just something to, that I think we should discuss, um, as a solution to that sort of downside of, of any one of these projects. Um, but overall.
Can I interject for one second? Because I heard two different statements tonight. One was that we don't give permits for specific spaces, but then also that there are permits for those spaces.
Right.
Which is it?
Well, uh, if you park on the street, your parking permit is.
So they can keep their permits, but they just won't have that parking lot. They can just park on the street.
Correct.
But there are not permits for that lot.
They are.
They are for that lot. That lot sells permits. Okay.
Bart, can you walk us through this?
I mean, I, I can tell you what I know. So the, the off-street lots that we're talking about here.
So the, the off-street lots that we're talking about here sell permits, limited numbers at a higher cost than the on-street overnight parking permit. So the permits within Village Hall and the lot to the north are forty dollars a month. You can get an on-street parking permit for thirty dollars a month. The people that are paying for the off-street want the known commodity of it's going to be there for me as opposed to I have to drive around the block and find it. So, yes, they are buying a specific parking permit for that lot and they're paying ten dollars more a month for that.
That's a good question.
So I would just wrap up by saying I'd vote yes for all three if I could, but, you know. I'm aware of that. But there's other lots we'll probably.
Yeah, no, I really appreciated the design. I think I appreciated the maximum use of the space and, and including the smaller units. My, my personal preference is more towards the townhouse design on the, on the front facade of it. But I, I think it was well done and orchestrated. And I do think there's a good system in place for this type of development. But again, my, my same concern is really with that. Space and it, it, it doesn't have to do with the parking. I, I appreciate both renderings from envisioned and T spell and, and adding those parking spaces. I think that was really well done and well thought out and I'm appreciative of, of that. But my concern is more with the space than, than the parking specifically. But I appreciate it very much, thank you.
I thought it was a good presentation. I just, again, I don't see us developing that.
I enjoyed the presentation. I really liked the additional services that were available to residents. I also liked that we were getting more units for less village funds. Big fan of that. Is, I, this is a question for Bert or whoever. Do we, would there be a process that we could take those public parking spots and sell night parking spots for those? And try and bring down some of the costs for the developers or recoup some funds on that some way? Or is, is that?
Well, we do currently sell permits for the library lot or for the village center lot.
Is there a question? So if the.
Oh, because then it's private.
Would we still charge for those spaces or would those, with the developer?
Or could the developer do it?
Get those resources? Is that your question?
Good point.
Yeah, like there, there is money to be had there.
Twenty-four thousand dollars a year for fifty permits.
I mean, we did in the past sell permits on private lots. I don't know. I presume that we can do it again. I don't think it can change historically, but yeah. Yep, in the past, we have done that.
Okay.
We do it at the Metro Barbit as well, so.
Even with that Saab that's been there for three years, it never moves. I frankly, I, I preferred this proposal over the first proposal. I still have the same problems, the same serious reservations about developing this sort of village center. I did, however, really appreciate, although the, the documents weren't updated. But I, I really appreciated being to look under the hood at the finances and how those worked out and where the money was going and how I sort of was able to Excel spreadsheet nerd out on that one, which was great for me. And I really do appreciate the fact that it doesn't use all two point one million of the TIF extension. It uses eight hundred thousand, leaving us with a pretty good chunk of money should we have another project somewhere else. But again, I, I have the same reservations and they're not parking reservations for this parcel. It's, it's community reservations.
I like the proposal a lot. I liked that it was the most aggressive in terms of thirty percent income. Level. I like that you didn't ask for all the TIF money. I guess that also ties in with my big concern, which I had coming into this, which was the, I guess I don't have the correct performer. But the performer I have goes it with a negative hundred and forty thousand dollar cash flow a year. Unfunded, unfunded. Okay. Because, but that would be my same concern is that it's similar in scope to envisioned. But you're asking for a lot less money and getting a lot less in rents, just the ability to execute on that and make those, that thing work. That's a, that's a, I'd want to see that vetted pretty heavily, carefully.
Yeah, I agree. I think that the. Sorry, multiple thoughts at the same time. I do think that this proposal does get us the most, you know, it moves us the furthest towards. Increasing opportunity for people to live here. And it does maintain the parking for the public and improves it because it would be covered as well, right? So I really do think that that's a benefit. That said, I understand that there's just a mind block about that developing the parking lot behind us. And I can understand that historically. So at this point, I would, I, I think you raise a really good question. I mean, the, the two more ambitious, I will say, proposals for the back lot. Definitely have a lot of more hoops, a lot more hoops to get through. So there's more risk of it not moving forward at the end of the day. So, you know, in our, I, I do feel like part of our job is to, you know, the, a previous board voted to extend the TID for these funds. We're several years after. We've done our education. We've gotten a lot of information. We've, you know, we've gotten this far and I do think that like closing the deal as it, as it were, I feel like policy-wise, that's an important thing to deliver. I also don't want to. Use all the money for only eighteen units when there are two examples here where we could get more. So that, that is a struggle for me, just philosophically, so philosophically. I think at this point, if, you know, going around, I think we've been pretty clear about what we would feel comfortable supporting or what we would like to see move ahead to a more thorough review process. But just sort of a lightning round to go around to be clear. And then staff, I'd like to hear from you as far as whether you need anything more from us this evening. Because at the end of the day, the reason why we wanted to do this type of review with you all in the room is so that you, you've been in this position lots of times in your line of work. And so you can kind of read the room about like how much, you know. Do you think it's worth moving forward or not or, you know, whatever? Only you guys can decide that for yourselves. So lightning round with globally, what you think you would feel comfortable with having a more detailed review of? What's worth reviewing, what's not? If you feel that you're at that place. And if you're not, that's okay.
You know, I think that I could see. The second project moving forward and I'd like to review that, you know, more in depth. I'm not ruling out the other two projects. Like you, I'd like to see more housing and, you know, more tax revenue coming into the village. But I would say, based on the temperature of the room, project number two is probably something that I could see moving forward with.
Yeah, I would say pretty much the same thing. I, I would like to see a project of some kind move forward on a library site. But if we, you know, if that's not going to go forward and we, there's only so much TIF money, you know, we're not going to have enough for two. I'd probably be most interested in seeing something more formal from the Spurling group.
And Spurl, we had a table, sorry.
Oh, sorry.
If you vote for it, you call.
Yeah, exactly. If we get the, if we get the deal, you can call me whatever you want.
Says here on the papers, so.
Late for dinner.
Yeah, I mean, my, my big thing with the Spurl development is I'd just like to see if there's any other creative ways we could look at using less of that, that two million dollars. It's just a huge chunk of change. And we know where that. Creating affordability in Shorewood is an ongoing process and it's going to cost money over a long period of time. It's, it's, there's no silver bullet here for that. So I would just, I, I would really want to look at any other creative solutions we can, we can come up with on that. Thank you.
Besides not wanting to develop that lot behind the, to the east of Village Hall, I have real concerns about us getting into like social services and wellness aspects of people's lives with the village our size. I mean, I think we live in a place that has pretty decent social services and we have a lot of healthcare in the village. We now have two major health systems. I just, our village, we have so, we have so many things on our plate right now. And maybe that's one of the reasons, besides not wanting to develop that site, that I just have a hard time seeing us taking on more. We're in a really challenging budget environment and we're having to look at everything we do. We're looking at parking meters. We're looking at charging for garbage pickup. We're looking at charging for streetlight replacement. And the idea of possibly taking on more social services through a housing development is a bridge too far for me. And I understand the benefits of it for people. I just don't see as a municipality, again, of our size, us branching out into that too, even though it would not necessarily be our jobs to do that as a housing component. We already have River Park that is in addition to our community. I just, I can't see us going into something bigger. And I like the compact, quick nature of the Spurl commercial.
I'd be in favor of all three moving forward?
I'd pick one, buddy.
No, you really don't.
Just kidding, okay. Number two. For all the reasons that have been listed. Again, like this, this process started in two thousand and twenty-one with the previous board. Now it's two thousand and twenty-four, it's going to be two thousand and twenty-five pretty soon. Like, you know, I, I recognize that we've only gone out for RFP to these lots very recently. That frankly is a little bit of a concern that it's like the, you know, the first one that showed up to dance, we're, we're just going to go dance. You know, are there other options that are better or are there other opportunities that are better? I don't know. But, you know, we've been out there for about a month and, and this was the first one. So with that in mind, you know, again, I, I'd be more interested in learning more and continuing the process with, with number two.
I don't. Feel like T spell, I don't have the right performer, so I'd feel like I would like. I don't feel like I can accurately or fairly judge that one because what I have is accurate, it's outdated. So, but having said that, I'm cognizant of the temperature in the room and asking you guys to go back and re-formulate a bunch of stuff for what I'm sensing is going to be probably a no from people involved. That's my guess. I would like to see that. I would like to see the correct one just so I can bet that personally as someone who does development. I'll be interested because I did think it was the most aggressive and it did leave the door open to doing more stuff. And I do know something, I do know that the community land trust is of interest to a lot of the members, people present here. And they would like to do probably both. So if any of these developments, I would be interested in going forward with any of them if we can come up with a way that they don't consume all of the funds. So I'd send them back for. Reworking and to see if the, if number two can come back without using all of the funds. Without recognizing that that might compromise the facade and stuff because, because premises somewhere, but.
Yeah, thank you. I think for the, say, I mean, if I'm really, politics aside, I do think that the T spell proposal is most closely aligned with the vision around extending a TID for affordable housing. With the vision of removing barriers for people to, for suburban communities to be diverse and inclusive. I'd be proud to have this partnership in place. I love that it doesn't, it's not asking for the full. Amount of funds so that we can, I really do want to see community land trust activity in Shorewood. So I'm just going to out myself as, you know, I really like the ambition of this proposal and I think it aligns with my values. It aligns with what I think is possible. And so I would support it a hundred percent. I don't know, I can, I don't think I can get you three other votes, but I have no idea actually that our whole board isn't here tonight. And the whole CDA isn't here tonight. But I do feel that. If I'm being completely honest and not just gauging, you know, what, what I think we can do.
Yeah, and I'm not only for number two, I'm saying.
Yeah.
As a, as a procedure question, how does this? How does this work? Does CDA have their own vote and we have our own vote? Like how does? You know, so if it's, you know. How are we doing this?
Great question. Thank you for asking. So. With these proposals, Bart and I are going to, following this meeting, do just a technical review on how they match up with our new commercial zoning code. We've not had a development to review in conjunction with that. So I think that'll be really educational for everybody to see how that comes out. We also have not had a proposal applied in conjunction to policy forty for TID assistance and creation. Then I'll be doing technical review on just how it matches up to those criteria. We'll provide both of those reviews to the developers who took the time to submit. And then we'll also share it with the board, so for your educational purposes. With regards to policy forty, the RFP relayed that after this process, we wanted to provide, the primary purpose of this was to get the developers feedback from our group because that's what we're most often asked for. And as we've talked about in this room tonight, Bart and I are technical, we're not political. And you are going to give the best input and communication regarding the community lens. So we wanted to provide them with that after this and after they receive the technical reviews. We will talk with them about whether they're willing to proceed forward with completion of phase one. A phase one application that's outlined in policy forty. That gets technical review through Bart and I. Then it goes to the CDA for review. Then it comes back to the board for review. And collectively, there's recommendation and action and that phase one application that then gives the developer another initial feedback of yes, we'd like you to either proceed with completion of phase two application, which is a more detailed application. Or whether there's not enough muster to continue. So to not proceed to a phase two. And that feedback, both of those stages come with recommendations from CDA and action by the board.
So four out of seven board members have said, recognizing that Jim's not here, Trust Yard Rover's not here. Four out of seven have said number two. So do you go through that entire process that you just described for number two only? Or do you do it for all three regardless?
We, what the RFP states is that after the technical review and they see where they align, that it's ultimately up to the developers to whether they want to proceed with a phase one application.
Based on the sense that they're getting from this evening?
Correct.
And the technical review?
Correct.
Okay.
So it's not our job to kill any of these? No.
But it's, but it's our staff time that's going to have to go through. All three of them.
However, I, I would just reiterate again that I want to express my gratitude to the developers who stepped forward to submit a proposal. Because for the first time, we're going to be able to use policy forty and kind of put that into more of a technical review action. It has not been used since it being passed in two thousand and twenty-one. It also allows the opportunity for us to put it through the process of review for the new commercial zoning code, which was also a significant policy change that we took here just over a year ago. So it, the, not only was tonight, I think, very helpful and informational in the way that all three of you provided presentations and discussion with the board. I have to share with you, I've been working. Gratefully for this community for six years. And this is the first time that we've really had open dialogue about proposals that could be coming through. The dialogue was wonderful to hear. It was educational, I hope, for all the members up here, as well as myself and Bart. I hope that the process spoke to you. I know that it was a large commitment for you to submit and go through this. But I think that what we're demonstrating tonight is the commitment to continue to learn and go on this journey with these sites and, you know, potentially others, but it's us going through a process. And I want to express that appreciation to the CDA and the village board, members who are in this room. Because this is just a, a big step forward in leadership and, and progress for our community. Thank you. Thank you. So in general, there is not a motion to be made at this time. So I am hesitant to take public comment at this time, because... Barbara, Kylie, Miller, okay. We weren't scheduled for public comment, and nor are we.
I just have a quick question. No matter what the, the body here decides to do going forward with any of the developers, as you can imagine, selling any public property is kind of a big deal for residents. So going forward, what or where is there going to be an opportunity for public input?
Right. That's why I'm not taking it tonight, because we didn't agenda it.
That's, I'm just wondering where, because people want to know.
Great question. And for those of you who haven't had the luxury of reading Policy Forty, it's located on our website under Policies. It's for TIF creation and assistance. And in Phase, the application, Phase One, there is request for a public engagement plan of how we would be communicating with the public. And then also again, in Phase Two, so that, similar to tonight's process, we're always engaging. You know, this is really, it's a partnership and a triangle really between the leadership group here, the staff doing the technical review, and the community. And the, the goal here is to move everyone forward at the same time. It, that's, it's one thing that I think Shorewood is doing really well, and that is every board I've had the fortunate experience of working with here has been committed to. And this is really the first time I've seen it the best in action, which is another reason why I'm expressing the gratitude. So at a very practical level, it would be at, if, for anyone that chooses to complete a Phase One application that would then go to the CDA and then come to the Village Board, those would be two points of public forum. Sorry, I got a little carried away there. No, that's okay. Just really grateful for all of you.
I have a question about timing, though, because I know we all have concerns about staff capacity. How much is going to be done yet before December? Because this is, this is a really busy time with budget, and we've got a lot of residents with other concerns, and I have great concerns about how we're going to be able, can we put this off? While we, because we've got just too much on our plates right now.
Well, I don't... High would be? So we're doing technical reviews, and then really it's up, it's the developer's choice as to whether they want to come forward with a Phase One or Two application. From my perspective, and Bart, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but once we're done with our technical reviews, that is essentially what we do anyways with a Phase One application. And then it's just really a matter of agendizing it and putting it through the process.
So what are we talking?
I think your point is noted that you have concerns about staff time, and we can work on that.
But what are we talking about here in terms of your technical review? Today is September twelfth.
Oh, you mean timing for the technical review?
Oh, well... Yeah, that's a level of work plan coordination that I personally... Bart and I have both started prelims to kind of set up the format, because we, right, we haven't used it, so we want to do that. If anything, to work as the educational component for everybody involved. But I'll connect with him in terms of what our timing will be, and we would be happy to communicate that to both all of the people who submitted the proposals and as well as the board. Once I have the opportunity to meet with you guys on Monday night, then I can kind of turn a new page to some other things, so. All right, with that, I would take a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
Okay, motion by Trustee Kudo, second by Trustee Lynn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? We are now adjourned at whatever time it is, eight forty. Thank you, everyone.